I just clarified my agenda item was to talk about city contractors hiring people that are not legal. That's my agenda item. Specifically to ask the administration or the Public Works Department, what policies and procedures are in place? And I thought that the agenda item was pretty self-explanatory. Thank you, Drew. That is my question here to see because we need to set the example. That's the whole point.
Did you still want to speak, sir?
Yeah, just real quick.
Just one question, man.
And I agree with you, Councilman. My name is Adrian Preven. I'm Director of Organizing with Arkansas Oklahoma Regional Council of Carders, Carders Union. And I agree wholeheartedly. You know, it's an agenda item. I don't wish to talk here in the middle of immigration this, immigration that. I've come to you before and discussed the problems that have been out there as far as 1099 misuse and worker misclassification. And along them grounds, with the city and the policies that it has in place, I'm just going to use for an example, don't get me wrong, the Arena project. All public works projects do have to be bid out, all aspects of it, determined by the construction management group or whatever scope of work is to come up. All parts have to be bid out. And in order to bid on them certain parts of that project, you do have to be pre-qualified with the City of Tulsa. The problem I see, and I have approached the city and wondered through the subcontractors, have to be pre-qualified as well. If I am LRLs, that you have already awarded that the drywall acoustical part of the Arena project to them, do the people that I subcontract out to now have to be pre-qualified with the city? And the answer I had gotten was no. So that basically just means that I can bid the project if I'm pre-qualified, bonded, and meet all the criteria that the construction manager puts forth. But I can turn around and re-sub it out to somebody else and make my seven to 10 percent profit. And then it's up to them. And you don't know, at that point, you as a city don't know what you're getting to do to work. And there are things that can be put in place. I think that is part of our, what we feel is trying to meet with the leadership besides the city council. And that's with the mayor, discuss the, we all know what the problems are out here. But coming to a solution and finding ways of enforcement that are fair for everybody, for your legitimate contractors on down to the worker and the leadership, and not making it a political deal, making it a community issue in which the money does circulate back. With that, there are other cities from Boston, I can name nine or 10, that have different resolutions, different, what is the word I'm looking for?
Ordinances.
Ordinances in effect that help restrain the unscrupulous contractors and leave them out of the bidding process at least. If it's something as simple as saying the contractors, subcontractors, and lower-tiered subcontractors, that covers the whole spectrum of everybody that's going to be working on that public funded project. It's more of a language thing that can help enforce a lot of these things and keep some of the bad seeds out of the equation. I appreciate it.
Anything special? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anywhere else? If not, Baker, would you like to, we've got all this to say.
Three things, first of all, maybe only two. I can't remember what the third one was while I was standing right there. One, I think it's an interesting discussion to have today after the references to September 11th, after the rally we had on the, some members of the council were there yesterday on the platter when we talked about the importance and value of all citizens in our city and how we were pledging ourselves to sort of protect everyone in this city. I don't think there's any question that when people are conducting themselves in an illegal manner, then there's a responsibility on the appropriate law enforcement agencies to deal with that. That's unquestioned. The other thing is that I would urge the council to, we are in collaboration, working with Jack on the real statistical, the data evaluation of the impact and the processes that are in place and aren't in place. And I think the, I think there's some misconception as to how the money flows. And that doesn't take away from the fact that there is illegal activity. But some of the objections to that illegal activity are maybe not well-founded in fact. And I think the opportunity to work with Jack and Monica Marzak and really analyze that and give us all the good analysis of what that is, what the impacts on our community are. If I remember the third thing, I'll say it later. But I thought from the discussion that it might be helpful for Mr. Hart first to talk about the limited contractual provisions when we are bidding, when we are contracting out. And then I thought maybe Carol Ainsworth, who is the Director right now of the Human Rights Department, may comment on what processes they have in place to follow up and to inspect those contractual processes. So Charles and Carol, if you all.
Mr. Hart, Mr. Preven, you got it.
Charles Hart, Director of Public Works for the City. Our, back to the fundamental process we use to secure contractors. We require on city projects, pre-qualification by ordinance of a contractor. We do not require pre-qualification of subcontractors. As such, we have looked at the issue a number of times and find it extremely difficult and very limiting on them, people being able to develop companies, upstart companies. And we feel that the subcontracting business, it really relates between them and the contractor. And the contractor then is held responsible for the project. And we have not moved forward with a pre-qualification ordinance for subcontractors with one exception. And that is the Arena project, which is being actually handled as a construction management contract where we actually, the different trades are all being pre-qualified. And it is an extremely difficult process to manage. And as you know, we hired a firm actually to manage that project because that puts us in the position of actually being the prime contractor and taking responsibility for all the subs. Our contract regulations in Section 107, Legal Regulations and Responsibilities to the Public, specifically requires the contractor to fully comply and be informed with all federal and state laws, laws, local ordinances, and laws and regulations, orders, or decrees of bodies or tribunals having any jurisdiction or authority. The contractor is the responsible party and if investigated, would be subject to meeting all those requirements. Public Works' staff is involved in ensuring that the project is being constructed in accordance with the plans and meeting the city's standards and specifications. The Human Rights, which Carol's going to talk about, has very limited staff, but has some oversight been over the paperwork associated with contractors' employment.
Carol Ainsworth, Agent Director of the Department of Human Rights. The Department of Human Rights is governed by Title V. And we're currently in the process of reviewing that to determine how we are in compliance with the court case. We do monitor contractors and subcontractors. Currently, our compliance monitor position is vacant and we have made an offer. That position is responsible for monitoring and making sure that federal wages are paid on these positions. And that's our main compliance responsibility. We also accept complaints of discrimination in employment, but we do not monitor for citizenship.
Would you say that again? I'm sorry.
Excuse me. We have a compliance monitor that is responsible for monitoring contracts and subcontractors for federal wages and make sure that they're paid their federal wage. That position is vacant at this time, but we have made an offer. The person is not acceptable at that time.
Counselor Barnes?
We do have some responsibility. We do monitor for federal wages.
Counselor Barnes?
Charles Hart, you said well ago that we don't pre-qualify the subcontractors because we just don't do that. And wouldn't it be better for us to do that if, having seen the DVD on the 1099 and seen how that works and knowing that we are losing money, the city loses money by that, wouldn't that be better for us to do something, put something in place, a contract of some sort, to make sure that when we give that contract to whoever that person is, and whoever they give it to still has to be in compliance? I think that, you know, I think because we always say we're manpower, whatever the reason may be, but right here is another loophole that I think we should be able to fill and say, here, we need to make sure this is how it's done because we are losing money. And we can eliminate a lot of these problems people are talking about right now if we just put one more thing in place to meet. That's how I see it.
We try to balance the issue of being able to get people to bid our projects, number one. If we don't have contractors and the, to bid our projects and have competition, we're going to pay such a high price, we can't afford to stay a business like that. So what our pre-qualification ordinance is written entirely for is experience and financial ability to complete the job. Not walking away, leaving us as we are with the project now that stopped in the middle of construction for the continual part, picture with all the weeds growing out because contractor was not financially stable enough to complete the work. And that was a pre-qualified contractor. Pre-qualification ordinance, as it currently is written, has no requirements dealing with the employment requirements of their employees in terms of nationality or their status of citizenship or what they pay and whether that goes through the payroll process and reports to the federal government. Including subcontractors in that actually says that for you to be qualified then as a subcontractor, you have to have previous identified experience in this exact same type of work and also have the financial resources to bond and ensure that you can complete that work. And that was what I was saying becomes limiting to the individual contractors. And on other meetings we've had here discussing how we get minority contractors and subcontractors and encourage the use of them, that's going to be very restrictive, quite honestly. So we're going to even tighten the window. But even if that, even if we implemented it, it wouldn't have a thing to do with the subject you're talking about, not one thing.
Counselor?
As written.
You think Counselor Hart?
Yes.
Counselor Christiansen?
Ma'am, I don't need to put you on the spot. And let me just summarize what you said. You tell me if I understand it right. You're saying that you have a position in your department that monitors proper payment of salaries of subcontractors and contractors from city projects.
On federal projects.
On what?
Federal projects.
Federal projects.
She's funded by federal.
Oh, okay. So that position wouldn't monitor a city-funded contract?
Just for federal wages.
Just for?
On a federally funded, federal-funded project.
Okay, so let's just use an example. 91st and Yale.
No, it would not.
So there's nobody currently, there's no procedures in place to make sure, other than that the contractor is required under Section 107 to comply with all the laws of the land, so to speak, right? One of them being wages and social security and all that. The city right now does not have anything in place to monitor city projects, other than we say to the contractor, you need to do this.
There are no laws for her to enforce that are local ordinances that set and dictate the wages for non-federally funded projects. There is nothing for her to go out and enforce on.
I think philosophically, may I, I'm sorry. I think philosophically, we as a city just need to have something in place that makes sure that our city tax dollars that are going to third penny projects or general obligation bond projects are going through the proper channels and are being, right down to the last dollar, being reported properly.
That's what I'm saying.
We don't have any ordinances to enforce, nor do we have any manpower to enforce those.
Which in your contract with the contractor, you just said that they're supposed to comply.
And those entities that are responsible, I mean, federal, state entities that have laws that are applicable to that contractor are the responsible enforcement entities. But the city of Tulsa, for those non-federally funded projects, have no laws that I'm aware of that stipulate what salaries and the employment practices of subs. And that's a council issue in terms of.
Well, then, maybe the council wants to take this by the horns and come up with some ordinances where we are able to do this.
Counselor Troy. Counselor Troy.
He and I look a lot alike.
Thank you. This is exactly what we're talking about. You know, we don't waste any time about going to other cities and see what they're doing on this and see what they're doing on that. We need to stop and look at what other cities' ordinances are on contract issues. And there's plenty of them out there. And this is another issue that we want to bring up with our meeting with the mayor when we sit down with the mayor and the leadership to go over these things. And it's like Maria has said a couple of different times, these things will take care of them if we put them in place in the right, in the right order and do the right things. And Mr. Baker, I'd like to know, you're talking about flow of money. You say, we don't understand the flow of money. What do you mean by that? We don't understand the way the money comes in and goes out? I'm just, I'm saying that it is a perception that I don't know that has been validated that wages paid to a person who is here illegally or illegally is not continuing to circulate within the local economy. And the argument and the perception is automatic that if dollars, if a employer is paying someone who is of an illegal status, then all of a sudden that money disappears out of our economy. And I don't think that's a valid assumption. But that's something that our policy researchers and Jack are working together to give us some real analysis on what is the validity of that concept. This is why we need the meeting with the mayor. This is why the council, you did the video, we had the input. We've got the, and it's important that we have a meeting with the mayor to sit down with her so we can start these processes of our ordinances. She wants us to be involved in Oklahoma legislation, and that's what this is about. Let me say two things. One, we have been engaged with Councilor Martinson, and we are under pressure with the council on this analysis that we thought the council was doing and was at the forefront of this issue. So we have been working, from our understanding, with the council's desire. The second thing, I think that Counselor Christiansen points out is very significant in the breadth of the need to evaluate performance on contracts because it's not only money, but it is safety issues. It's all the other things that are involved in construction or whatever the contract may be. So it's a broad subject that needs the appropriate analysis done. And we thought we were engaged with the council in doing that. If there is more that we need to do or the council would like to do, we'll be glad to do it. And also, as we continue to work on the revisions to Title V, this particular issue has not been a part of that discussion. But as we look at contracting in general, these issues can very well be incorporated into some of the revisions that we bring back to. Well, here again, this goes, we're not just talking contract. We're talking about money being lost through 1099s, misrepresented, and people being paid under the table. So it's not just the contracts that we have here in Tulsa with construction workers. It's everywhere, and it does improve a lot of different areas.
Counselor Henderson?
Yeah, and the only thing that I'd like to add to this is that I agree with several accountants around this table that we need to strengthen the ordinance to include, to cover the things that we already know that's being missed. I agree with that 100 percent. But we don't even need to do that if we don't add the people to make sure they stay in compliance. That's going to be the problem. We can change the ordinance all we want, and we can have it looking great. But if we don't have the enforcement for it, if we don't give the people the right to monitor and check, then we're right back where we started. So I hope that if we take this on, we are able to fund the whole package and be able to provide those people necessary to enforce it.
Counsel. Counsel Robinson?
Yeah. I implore everybody to please wait until we let Jack do his job and we'll work with the mayor's office. It's already in process. So before we bring this thing up again and start jumping to any conclusions, let's get some facts before we act. The second thing I want to mention is Counselor Henderson is exactly right. If we go into this deal, we're going to have to pay for somebody to go in and do this. And by the way, we're the city of Tulsa. We're not the US government, and we're not the government of the state of Oklahoma. Those entities have their own responsibilities relative to a court of law. And the other thing I'll say is, before we jump to any conclusions, I think we ought to get some small business guys in here and let them tell us what kind of imposition this would be on them if we imposed more record keeping on them. Counselor Christiansen owns a business. How much more reporting do you want to have to do in the community? I don't want to have to do any more than I have to and still run my business. So I think what we need to do is actually get some input from the people that would be directly affected by it. So having said all that, if we can kind of let this thing rest for a while until we get some facts before we act, I would dearly appreciate it. I didn't know this was going to be brought up today. I would have checked with Counselor Christiansen before it was on the agenda and kind of told him where it was good. So I think we're all concerned about the issue, but let's get some facts first.
Well, before we shut up, I think we need to let Counselor Westcott say something, and then I think Counselor Christiansen will say something else.
Well, it's funny how, you know, you can sit in these meetings and you think that you need to say something, and then two or three counselors say the same thing right before you. But I want to echo what some of you guys have said in the last few minutes here. Regarding the agenda item which was put on by Counselor Christiansen, I think it's clear that there is no city ordinance, there is no city policy regarding subcontractors hiring illegal aliens. There is a widespread perception that that is going on. And we don't have any city ordinance dealing with that, if it is going on. I think we do need to be sure that we don't react too hastily to the problem. We need to make sure that we look at the study that Mr. Blair is doing. We need to work with the administration. And when we get our, and we don't need to drag this out for six months or a year. I'm not saying that. But we need to get the facts. We need to, and if the facts show what we think they're going to show, we need to write an ordinance, adopt new city policy prohibiting subcontractors on city projects from using illegal aliens. Find the funding to hire the person to enforce the ordinance. But we don't need to drag this on for a year. We don't need to study it to death. Hopefully, we can move at a reasonably prudent speed and solve the problem. Whether or not it imposes an undue burden on small businesses to comply with the ordinance, this may sound harsh, but I don't think that needs to be part of the evaluation. Whether or not it imposes an undue burden on someone to hire, to make sure that they hire legal citizens or legal immigrants, they need to comply with the law. They need to hire legal immigrants, legal citizens, stop hiring illegal immigrants. And if that's too much of a burden on them, then they have no business doing business. But all I'm saying is, let's work through the study process in a reasonable, prudent, but hopefully short period of time. Let's see where we are. Pass an ordinance, fund a position to enforce it, and let's take care of this problem.
Counselor Christiansen? Well, I, I'll go.
I would echo a lot of the comments at the table. Counselor Westcott, I believe that you're right on in saying that we need to address this situation. But I would say, my one comment would be that I think we need to think about the way in which our local government interacts with the state government and federal government, something that Counselor Martinson mentioned. We have to look at jurisdictional issues. We have to look at enforcement issues. And we have to look at the practical reality of the resources that we have compared to those other governmental entities. And so I think it's important, as we move forward, that we keep in the back of all of our minds how this fits in with the overall scheme of this problem.
Baker, you have something you want to say?
One thing. For members of the previous council, I'm sure you can remember these some kind of discussions on monitoring pay and unit developments. We put standards in place, and we don't have the staff to go back out and monitor. And members of the current council probably have had enough experience with PUDs to understand those same issues. Secondly, and just remind us all again of Auditor Wood's letter a couple of years ago that says we have depleted some of our staff under the current budget constraints that address the checks and balances of government. So that's something that, we understand it, we know we have. And thirdly, I think to leave on the table that there is no ordinance in place to act on illegal immigration is probably correct. I'm not going to argue that point because I'm not an attorney and I don't know ordinances. But to leave it on the table as if there is no city requirements against the employment of the legal immigrants is, I don't think is correct. Because as Mr. Hart has said, we do include in the contract compliance requirement to comply with federal law. And immigration is a federal law. So.
Okay. Thank you.
If I misunderstood, I apologize. I thought Ms. Hart had indicated that there was no city ordinance in place requiring subcontractors.
Ordinance is correct. But to leave the impression that there is no standard against hiring illegal immigrants in Tulsa would not be correct.
We did indicate that it's those entities that are responsible, federal entities and state, to enforce federal state laws. Not, we don't have anything as a local entity to enforce.
If I may, thanks, thanks. I think we've debated this enough. The question?
Can I go back to one item? Frown at me, yeah. Carol informed me that the Commission on the Concern for Tosses with Disabilities has quarreled in discussion with Jack Page some of those same issues you brought up. And I wasn't familiar with that. She wanted you to go up to the council. Thank you.
Okay, back, no. Back to where, I hadn't had a chance to say a word.
Oh, no. I'll go on.
Basically, where we are, if there's a segment of our contract that we can't, you don't have any control over, this is a matter of city policy. And the council needs to determine themselves if they want a set of policies to cover that end up. This is basically where we are. And you talk about small businesses. It isn't equality. And you talk about small businesses, it isn't equality, equity isn't there if some business over here is doing something under the table, and you've got another, another group over here, small business, that's paying all these things that they're supposed to pay. So you're not, there's the equity there. So this is another policy situation that we've got to look at as counsel because, and I'm like Counselor Westcott, we can't wait forever to do this because we've got to make things equitable for everybody that's kind of operating in city town. Thank you very much, and if you would please, I'd like to move along. Number nine.